Okay. Good evening. The planning board meeting will get started on Tuesday, March 21st. We have an A and R that is not going to be heard tonight, and then all of the other public hearings will be. And since we are here with only four members and several of which only three have heard the cases so far, we probably, we can't do anything with any of them until our fourth voting member. Do we have any?
Look at this. That looks good.
Yeah. The watershed mail looks good. How about the minutes? Can we approve the minutes?
Yeah. From, yeah, what's the, yeah. What date was it? The 7th.
March 7th minutes.
That's going to take all 30 seconds. I make a motion to approve the March 7, 2017 meeting minutes.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The watershed mail, yes, it looks very snazzy. So did you, you took pictures or what did you do?
No, I just did the graphics.
Oh, you did the graphics. Okay.
Peter and Jean did most of the content. I did the layout.
Yes.
And Rebecca, I think, was involved with the content. And Rebecca got us the copy.
Yeah.
Rebecca got the copyright approval to use someone.
Oh, this fellow?
Yeah, because it belongs to the Department of Ecology in Washington, D.C.
Oh, I see. Well, snazzy. Hello, Pete. You have till 7:30?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's go. We'll do, should we do Brooks School first? Okay. What is left?
So, all department issues have been addressed. Stormwater has signed off on the application, and the applicant is applying for a height waiver through the ZBA, which has been conditioned into the draft decision for your review.
Okay. Yeah, it's conditioned, Mark, that they get that.
Yes.
Before any building permit of construction.
So, can we close the public hearing on Brooks? Is it, I mean, we don't have anything where?
There's no other outstanding issues, no.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the Brooks School?
I'll make a motion.
Site plan.
Public hearing on 1160 Great Pond Road for the watershed special permit and site plan review.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It's not a watershed special permit, it's just?
Watershed, yeah.
Okay. I thought you said 1150.
No, I think she said 1160.
Well, I said 1160.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I said.
Are they two separate permits? They're two separate permits. Yeah. Yeah, you're right. So don't pay attention today. Which one should we do first?
I'm going to start with the site plan review, since it's more comprehensive.
Okay.
You'll have to take David off this.
Oh, yes, I will. They have not. They are going to go before the board. But it is conditioned that they can't get a building permit until they have that.
On 15? We have that the fill being removed is non-hazardous. If it, if there is hazardous, we, or appropriately.
Oh, we worded that.
Yeah, just so they don't have to come back to us. They have to have their, you guys are hiring an LP or?
Yeah, there'll be a soil.
Yeah.
And then we'll have to adhere to it.
Right, yeah.
Federal guidelines, if we do have any hazards.
Yep.
So I would just recommend 17 be moved down to prior to the issuance of a building permit, so it gets caught at that point.
There's an oversight.
Rather than just a general special condition.
Is 16, the shall be in 16, is that repeated anywhere in the conditions? Oh, that's, it's a special condition. No, that is the, never mind, that.
Yeah, it's kind of, I didn't know if it's a special condition, it's not necessarily, like.
It's a special condition, it's a general.
Yeah, I wasn't too sure.
Doesn't matter, that's fine. That's fine. I just thought it was, I was still in the finding effect, so that's fine.
So I see in seven, in 16 you have the fertilizer note.
Yes.
Does there also need to be a reference here to the fertilizer deed restrictions?
We put that in the watershed.
Okay, great. All right.
Because it's in the watershed related.
Yep. Yep.
I can put it in both if you'd like.
If it doesn't harm it.
They probably already have five deed restrictions on the property with that in there now.
Just ask a question of the fertilizer.
Was that in regards to just work in the watershed? Or is that, we have area of the project that's outside of the watershed, would that restriction still apply?
Well, we have the 214 covenant that was based upon the porch, and then we have another covenant that was based upon another project that you did.
It's inconsistent with that?
Yes.
Something different?
Yeah, and then so this would be with that.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's run this one first, so. I can't do two things at once.
I didn't know if you had moved on.
So, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the site plan review special permit as amended this evening?
Make a motion to approve the site plan review special permit as amended for 1160 Great Pond Road, Brooks School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And I can also reword number 10, which is very similar to the other one, Lynn.
Yeah, something like a properly disposed of in accordance with local, state, federal laws, you know, something like that.
In number one, can we qualify Lake Ochikowik in either the beginning of the paragraph or in the end, you know, Lake Ochikowik as the sole source of drinking water supply?
It's standard language, but I can add that.
Yeah, and we'll make that the new standard.
That sounds great.
Yeah, no, it's good, because you should.
That's why.
I mean, that's the whole reason why we're doing this.
Yeah.
We weren't.
Not because it looks pretty. So in number 17, do we have any provision when we assign, when a construction monitor is assigned, do we have any provision where when it's near the sensitive zones to the lake, that they are review or brief or affirm that they understand what the rules are in the zones close to the lake?
They do give us an independent, like, we have a form that they fill out.
Right.
But we can, and the watershed make it more.
I mean, otherwise, I don't know that they know what they're looking for.
But I think that form did say that they.
They get a copy of the decision.
And so they have to follow the decision. And then they report.
Anybody who's the monitor must have a copy of the bylaws, especially must understand the watershed. I mean, I think that's probably less a decision thing and more a practice thing.
Okay.
So we can attach that to the form.
Yeah, we can reiterate it.
Side of the form.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the watershed special permit for Brooks School, 1160 Great Pond Road, as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the watershed special permit for 1160 Great Pond Road as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Uh, Kindred Holmes?
Yes, so to clear up a couple of issues of the.
Thank you.
That we had at the last public hearing in terms of DPW. DPW provided further comments that I provided in your packet, and they said that they do have concerns about the stormwater management. However, they assume that they would be able to address those types of comments through the NOI process and not necessarily the planning process. And so the other issue was the National Grid, and they have still not released their review. And the applicant has stated that it may take up to eight weeks to actually get that decision from National Grid in terms of the easement.
So the second one's probably okay as long as we properly condition it, and it's sort of, but the first one, I'm not sure I understand what that means.
So the last time I had mentioned that there were some issues with the stormwater in terms of the fact that they had proposed a grass well, but the slope, and, you know, there was issues, you know, would there be check dams, and is the pipe sized correctly in order to do the runoff from the swell into the wetland? And they had said that they weren't going to be adding any additional structures, and so the DPW direct engineer at the time had commented noted. And when I had a phone conversation with him, he said he had believed that that was going to be something he could address during the NOI, because he thought that they were going to be doing more of a stormwater review than planning, because there was no land disturbance permit. So then he wrote that in writing, and I attached it in your packet, that that's in fact what he was hoping, that he would get to make sure that there were check dams, make sure, or make sure that the stormwater was functioning as it should be, because there was no other stormwater review.
I don't know what you guys think.
So the bottom of the. The bottom of the driveway is in conservation jurisdiction, so they're going to go through a notice of intent. The total disturbance on all the plans does not total more than an acre, so it doesn't trigger the disturbance permit. The DPW engineer has his concerns about that, so he's asked for an AutoCAD at the time, which we've conditioned he must get to confirm is less than an acre disturbance. And as far as the drainage on the driveway permits, it has to go to a swell to the side, so he's going to review all the drainage with Conservation.
But I guess my concern is, let's assume it's less than an acre. Let's put that aside for a second, is why wouldn't we resolve this drainage issue now? Ours is the most restrictive process. It's the one where we have most discretion. Why can't we solve it now?
Yeah, applicant didn't seem to be willing to go through that process with the planning board, and after discussion with the DPW, again, noted that they would rather go through it with the Conservation Commission, and I provided that documentation in the packet.
I don't know what other people think. That's, I find that a little bit annoying. I mean.
Well, I still have a question on, they're leaving basically an island in the middle of the 40, 44,000 square feet, which is going to be not disturbed. I mean, how do you not disturb that area between it and it's, you know, they were talking a couple hundred feet under the acre, and we don't know what National Grid's going to do, if they can be able to build it the same way. If they go a couple hundred feet more, anywhere, they're going to be over the acre, you know, so.
Yeah, well, I'm, I mean, I think they can keep it under an acre. I think they actually, what I find in this one a little frustrating is I think they've actually done a pretty good job limiting the cutting and filling and everything on the property, so they're sort of generally doing a good thing. I just don't understand why you can't do the drainage stuff. And maybe we can ask the applicant, is there any reason why you just don't want to do it? You're going to do it eventually, why can't you do it now?
Well, the main reason is we kept it under an acre to avoid this, to keep things moving forward at this stage of the game, and to address Lynn's comment with the island area. There's a nice tree there now that's currently an island encompassed by the existing driveway, so we're not going to disturb it, because part of the agreement with John Brigazzi was to stake out the limit of work, provide them with an AutoCAD file so they could confirm we didn't exceed the one acre, and we're going to maintain that island by staking it out as an island, and it's the limit of work, it's an inside limit of work, so the guys can't go in there. We'll stay out of there. And, and John Brigazzi's comfortable pursuing stormwater, or analyzing that with us as we go through Conservation, which we have an NOI submitted, and we're going in front of Concom tomorrow night to kick off that process. So there is an NOI that's active and underway.
But I guess we're, we're granting you a certain amount of regulatory relief to build something that is not, something that's allowed by right, and we want to make sure that as a result of building that, we don't create drainage problems, and it sounds like there's a potential for that. So maybe, maybe we should just leave this open until, until after you go to them, and then you can come back to us and show us the same thing you showed them. I mean.
I don't see much need in that personally, and as we discussed last time, we're increasing the impervious area on the site by like 1%. It's.
Well, if that's the case, then how come our engineer doesn't think that that, is that a problem or what? I mean, what's, what's his issue?
Read the memo, John.
Yeah, what was the memo say?
It's, he's, yeah. Do you want to bring it up?
I think he's just trying to cover his bases, and he'll be going through that process with us. We're not bypassing him by any means.
He has an issue. I mean, he didn't, he wouldn't write the memo unless he has an issue. They sign off on 99.9% of them.
Well, that's my point. If he does have an issue, then we have to resolve it. I, I personally, I feel like, I don't want to make a decision until he's, he's happy, unless he's being totally unreasonable, and I don't think he is. Do you want to read the note? Oh, here it is.
It's three pages, no.
Oh, it is, no, it is three pages.
Give him a copy.
Okay.
Don't forget, Conservation's only going to have jurisdiction of that small area, so I mean, they're, you know, if there's an area above that, then there's no one, it's out of anybody's jurisdiction as soon as we give the frontage exception.
Well, I mean, I don't want to overly engineer this thing, but if he has a legit, if he has an issue, I want to make sure his issue gets resolved satisfactorily, and I would prefer not to vote until we had, I don't know how everybody else feels.
The vibe I got from him is that he says concerns, as he says here, for the potential for stormwater runoff, and he said, "If we're looking for additional info," and that's what we'll be providing him, and we're not going to.
I know, but.
Is it up to him to decide what stage he's going to do it at, whether it's the NOI or with us?
Well, I mean, the, the point is maybe that's the right place to do it, but that doesn't mean we have to make a decision before that. If, I mean, it seemed to me we've asked for this information a couple times, and for some reason, the applicant has chosen not to give it to us. I, you know, that's their, their discretion.
It seems to me the holdup here is the, the engineer's review of the stormwater and discussions with us, that's between he and I, and we're going through it with him in Conservation. I guess I don't understand the difference. And regarding the one acre thing that keeps popping up, I believe there was a condition in the draft approval, special condition number 10, so we have to stand with that if something changes with regard to, you guys mentioned the easement, and maybe changing how we did things.
Pete, do you have an opinion?
So, I think there's three communications from John, one of which is first an email, then the full three-page letter on March 6, followed up by an email on March 15, saying, you know, that he spoke to Paul about his comment letter, "The engineering department has some concerns, potential for stormwater runoff. Details for proposed stormwater controls on site."
So he wants to assure it's not over an acre, and he wants to assure that the stormwater doesn't run out onto Salem Street.
Yeah, and that's something that's very important to us for a lot of different reasons, so I guess, and I, I think the consensus of this group is that until we have the answer to that, we're not going to vote this. I mean, sorry, but.
The specific answer to what? He has concerns, he wants to address with us with Conservation?
Come on, you know what it's, solve the damn problems. It's not that hard. This is like the fourth time we've had this conversation with you guys, and you refuse to address the issue. If you just work with them and solve the problem, we would have been done by now.
Well, we thought we had, and we were expecting to close us out today.
Well, you obviously haven't. You haven't resolved it with them, so you got to communicate a little better, and it's not a surprise from us. This is not the first time you've heard this.
Well, I don't know if it's fair to say we need to communicate better. His email clearly states he'd take this up with us later. Maybe it was misunderstanding between you guys and us, but between us and the engineer, it sounded like he was fine going forward and reviewing.
Well, this is all we have. If, if, if you can get him to issue a note saying he's okay with this, then fine, but we don't have that. We don't.
John, can I just ask?
Yeah.
Back in, Jean, so in the rest of his latest email, he says that his comment, that the board include a condition requiring limited disturbance be staked surveyed, and that the AutoCAD drawing be provided identifying the stakeout to assist in verifying monitor that the disturbance does not exceed one acre. So he's asking us, I think, when he says "the board."
Yes.
He's asking us to condition.
Yes.
That part is fine. The one acre is fine. I'm perfectly okay with that, to condition that. What I'm, what I'm suggesting is he has this open-ended concern about drainage in the cell, into, you know, is it, what is it, Salem Street? Is it? Yes, Salem Street. And that I don't think has been resolved, and that is within our jurisdiction, because we're approving the driveways. And what we don't want to have is a driveway where there's cascading water and it freezes or any of those sorts of things. And until we resolve that, I don't see how we can make a decision. That's, that's my opinion.
There was some back and forth between the town engineer and myself to try and rectify those, and the engineer had contacted the town engineer directly, and they've had conversations, so it did take a turn for, when I had tried to originally bring it up at the last meeting, everything kind of got kind of mumbled, and I think that the town engineer was just trying to talk and trying to assist, but as you can see, it's based on, you know, the engineer and him talking. There's been no talking between us and them.
And they should get this resolved before they go into Conservation, because the driveway has to be changed, and they'd have to come back to us.
With respect to the driveway comment, we've already redesigned the driveway to, to what the engineer wanted. We have it sloping away from Salem Street before it comes back up. We've added a detail to our plan which.
But you haven't gone to Conservation yet, though, and you haven't gotten your easement yet on National Grid.
Correct.
So you still.
But it is on land.
Yeah, I mean, certain things I'm not worried about, you know, like, like in the last decision, we conditioned it for them to get the variance. In some cases, we don't do that because of the, the way it's put together, but we were okay in doing that. And I'm okay on the one acre, and I'm okay on the National Grid, but I'm not okay on this drainage, because it's too central to what we're doing. And I, I just don't understand why it's so difficult for you to get with our engineer and make our engineer happy. That's all you need to do.
We thought this letter was him happy at this stage of the game, is what he said.
I guess it's acceptable to him, but not to the board. The board wants the assurance that.
That seems to be what it is.
Right.
But we.
Yeah, I mean, if in some cases we have the town engineer effectively serving the role of an outside engineer, we should have the same rigor and the same discipline and the same closure process, I think. Yeah. So, so that's, so I guess we just, we'll keep it up in the next time. I'm sorry, and, you know, but. So we're Country Club Circle.
Yep, 58 Country Club Circle. The applicant has submitted response comments to the stormwater review, and the stormwater consultant has not had a chance to respond to those comments yet. He, the applicant also has submitted a pool maintenance plan as we had requested, and he is in the process of getting a landscape plan as we had requested. So there's still a lot of outstanding items with this particular project. The stormwater review consultant did call me personally and told me that she does have a couple of concerns for this particular project. Even more so, the wetlands delineation has not been confirmed by Conservation. They have not been given the right to access the North Andover Country Club property in order to delineate that wetland, so that we can get a confirmation from Conservation. So.
Is, is the Country Club refusing or just silent?
I'm not too sure. I've just heard that there's been calls, and they haven't returned.
Got it. Okay.
I apologize.
That's fine, Pete, go ahead. Thanks. Thank you for coming in as much as you could, sorry. Okay, it's all yours.
I don't mean to seem like I'm sucking on my fingers, but I just cut myself, and I don't want to bleed all over the place. George Samboris, engineer for the project with Atlantic Engineering, representing Mr. Stanley. As far, for the first question you have regarding the Country Club, we had sent them an email, and it was either right after the first meeting or just before the first meeting, I can't remember, and the response from the email we had that they, the general manager wanted to talk it over with superintendent and be getting back to us. Called them again, called them as early as late as this morning. We still have, we did not get a returned phone call, and we have not received a returned email. We don't know if they're reluctant, or they're just busy, and they just haven't had a chance.
Somebody talking about, somebody going on there for like an hour or a half hour?
It's going, it's going on their property. The property line is right here, and the edge of the wetlands is over here. This is, this is all their property.
But I mean, like, how much, what are we talking about? How long would somebody there? What would it look like? I mean, because, you know, we could maybe call ourselves if, you know, it's the kind of thing that's totally de minimis and, you know...
The, I believe, the conservation agent may have even talked to Steve.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I think Jennifer...
It's not long, it's just going, it's, you know, it is a line that was delineated in 2006, was approved in 2006 from when he went for permitting for the garage. The lines are, by law of chapter 131, only the last three years, the delineation of the line anyways. It's a type of wetland. We don't think it moved. We think the line's the same. But obviously, since we are close, the commission wants it confirmed, and rightfully so.
Fair enough. Okay, just, you know, to the extent that we can help you.
No, we appreciate it because it's, you know, it's, you know, between the wetland scientists going out there and then us going out and field locating it, it's only a morning's worth of work. And, you know, if, if the Country Club wishes after the permitting process is over, we can pull the wetland flags down. All you'll see is wetland flags there.
Right, okay. So, is there anything else you can update with?
All I can do is, very quickly, is from Lisa's initial comments, four of them dealt with plan notations. Item two and three was to indicate the Zone A in the plan. That's this shaded line right here. It's the Zone A, not from the lake itself, but the limit of Zone A from the water body, the wetlands that connect to the lake. The limit of work is this dash, this dash line towards the rear here. That's been indicated. We had to update, I updated two notations, one for the, include low phosphorus fertilizers, and also that the low phosphorus restriction on the fertilizers, not just for establishing growth of the, that area would disturbing, but it would be for future maintenance of the lawn itself. And the other one was to add that there'll be no coal tar sealants to be used on the property. The other concern Lisa had about, was whether some of the updated and increased area patio would actually make it to the rain gardens. We added in some slopes to the walkways and the patios, some grading elevations. We're confident it goes there, but that's up to Lisa to decide. I don't know if she still has concerns. Sounds like from what Rebecca's saying, she still may have concerns.
Okay.
The other biggest one...
Are the grades clearly delineated? Because I know that was the question.
The grades, the grades are delineated, and what I, what I had done is added spot elevations on the walkways and some slope arrows. Because there's a rain garden here, we have another rain garden here. What we're not showing on the plan is there's another planting area here, there's another planting area here, there's another planting area here, and plus, they're adding other areas. I mean... If Lisa still has a concern that is not getting there, we'll make those rank, we'll make some of those rain gardens, too. We're confident it goes there, and right now, what we're showing based on the calculations, that the rate of runoff from this site after we're done equals what it is now.
Can we just repeat Lisa's comments with when he was just talking?
Okay, good. So, it sounds like you're having a dialogue back and forth.
Right, and the only other one that was a concern, she had, Lisa had made up, one of her comments was that DEP had a new regulation, a regulation in watersheds that limit the impervious area, citing the right regulations but wrong portion. The portion of the regulation she cited was if someone was going to create a new regulation or make a modification to an, I'm sorry, make a new watershed or make a modification to an existing watershed, that regulation does not apply to existing water supplies of watersheds. This was confirmed through DEP. So, DEP does not have any regulations limiting the amount of impervious on a piece of property in a watershed, and even, and as DEP's regulations drafted, limiting the impervious area on a watershed is a zoning regulation. DEP's regulation, the state's regulations can't enforce, can't restrict zoning on the town. It has to be into the community. So, the way the state, the way DEP does that is when someone wants a permit for, for a water system, through their permitting process with the water resources, they're required to establish zoning that uphold state's regulations. And Andover has the right regulations for an existing watershed, and out of all of North Andover's regulations, there is no regulation that limits the amount of impervious. So, that statement number five does not apply.
Got it, okay. Good, great. Thank you.
That's it.
Questions? Go ahead.
On the O&M plan, just a couple of practical items that you should address. You have it, they're going to drain it down seven inches. Homeowner has to know how to do that, and you have to have a pump on hand because you assume that's going to be like a hurricane or a huge storm.
Well, yeah, I mean, when I say seven inches, that's probably taking maybe two inches of water out.
Right, but, yeah, but you also, you're going to have to have the chemical on hand to be able to treat, to dechlorinate the water because it's going to be an emergency situation. It's not going to be end of season, since, I mean, typically, we don't like chlorinated pools around the lake, so I think you want to just be extra careful to have, that they have to have the ability to drain it down behind, below the skimmer level, which would need a pump, you know.
And the other thing I could always add, too, is say they have the chemical on hand, or they'd have to pump it out and remove it from site.
Right, yeah, just something like that, just so, they're not going to know, you know, so...
Yep.
So, okay, that's it on the O&M.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, forward you those comments.
Pardon me? Okay, thank you.
Lisa's comments just came in, so I'll forward those to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're on to our last public hearing, which is a new one for 681 Grapevine Road. So, can you give us the overview there?
The applicant proposes to construct a 656-square-foot addition to a single-story ranch house in the non-discharge zone. The stormwater review consultant has reviewed the plan, and after a few recommendations, the applicant has revised the plans, and the consultant has no further comments for this particular project. The applicant is going to update the plan to reflect erosion control and remove the conservation zone because there was some misunderstanding of whether or not the conservation zone applied, but because it's after 1994, it does not, I mean, prior to 1994, so there's no conservation zone. But he waited to, or would like to wait to update those plans unless the board has further comments or would like to further amend the plans in front of you.
Okay.
And I'll pull up the plan right now. So, the proposed addition is right there, and then there's the proposed storm trench right there. And they have the distances from the wetland, and you'll see the conservation zone, but that needs to be removed since there is no conservation zone, and there's no display of erosion control.
So, this is a corner of Brentwood and Grapevine Road. So, the wetland they're in jurisdiction of is to the rear of the property.
And I have a...
But they're well beyond 400 feet from the lake itself.
Right, okay.
I have a lorry that I can pull up if you'd like.
So, we're dealing more with what's behind than the back part of the property than the front part of the property, you know?
Yeah, there's one across the street there, and that's about 260, 60, 260 feet from it. But that's the locus from the lake itself.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's approximately 113 feet from that rear wetland. But the house was built in the early 60s, I believe.
So, is there any, I mean, I can't, obviously, a proposed addition, but I, I can't tell like what's the limit of work and whether the property slopes or anything, and how...
Well, the dash line shows the actual proposed edge of clearing and limit of work. It's, she's pointing it out right there. The property does slope to the rear, but it's not, not dramatic. There's no contour lines or anything on the map.
And is it, is the addition one story, two stories?
One, one story. Good evening, my name is Carl, I'm the homeowner.
By the way, yes, that's you, yes.
Sorry.
So, are you the owner, or are you...
Yes, I'm the homeowner.
Okay, the owner. And who, I presume you have, have you hired somebody yet to do the work for you?
No, right now, we're, you know, I've just gotten construction drawings finalized, and, you know, got the survey finalized, and looking to seek approvals and put it out the bed.
Okay.
Jennifer's confirmed the wetlands.
Yes, Jennifer has confirmed the wetlands. So, conservation has been out there and has reviewed the wetland, and they are all set with that.
So, it's, now, is this, I'm trying to think, is, yeah, everything on this street has, is sewer, even though I think at one time they didn't, so...
Well, the area to the rear, that wetland was just identified as a wetland during this process, because there was, I guess, originally, in the original development plan, there was not a culvert that goes underneath Brentwood, but supposedly, when you go to the rim of my property, when Jen and I walked back there, it's clearly, there's a culvert that goes underneath, you know, a pipe that goes underneath the road. And that's what really drew her concern, and then we hired in a wetland scientist to flag it, and then my surveyor did the square footage.
Yeah.
What's the square footage of the existing house?
The existing house, it's roughly, you know, 1,400 square feet, so it's...
Isn't there something that there's a...
And those numbers are on this plan?
Yes.
It's only a two-bedroom home. I have two kids, a seven-year-old boy and a six-year-old girl, so at some point, we'll need another bedroom, and that's what this is.
What makes the location of the proposed addition logical compared to putting the addition on...
You can't see it from, but what it basically is, is a dormer that goes off the front of the house that's basically the width of the addition, so it's kind of carrying that dormer forward. We thought about going out to the back, but obviously, with the wetland, that'd be, you know, that would be the concern. So, the idea would go forward to carry that dormer and carry that line of the house outward. And also, where that little notch is, is a doorway currently, that's our, the, our second front door. So, where the idea is to carry that right into like a hallway, you know, there's a hall, the hallway, I can't see you, but...
We have a screen cam.
Yeah, I can, I'm going to try and point you, but if you, you know, basically, there's a hallway here that runs the depth of the house, the bathroom being here, one bedroom here, one bedroom here, front door is here, so it would just carry that hallway down and we just walk to our existing second front door, and that'd be the...
Walking into the...
Walking into the, the new addition, which would be the master bathroom, master bedroom.
And how is the drainage going to come off of the roof?
I have, you know, we're basically going to have, you can see the, where it's bolded there, those would be the new gutters, and we have now, now, we'll actually add downspouts to run to that, you know, dry well or...
But where's the dry well? Are they all, are they all in the one dry well?
It's the proposed storm tech.
The storm tech, right.
Okay.
And the only clearing in the lot is the one tree in the upper corner, right? The only clearing in the lot is that one tree near the...
Actually, there would be four trees. There's the four trees there pointed out there, there are a couple of them are double, double trumps.
Yep.
The three of them are New England, are northern hemlocks and, are New England hemlocks, and one is a pine. Concern is being, as we get closer to the house, so...
Is there anything around there, like, I know that it says grass in the front, but is it behind where the addition is? Would that be grass too, and is everything, you know, basically on three-quarters of the addition all around it, is it all going to be grass?
Around the addition, yes. I mean, at some point, you know, we're taking some of those trees down, I'd like to return some of those trees. There's a dogwood, you know, she'll probably bring it up on the, on the, on the GIS map, but there's a dogwood here, and around the whole perimeter of the property is all trees. Predominantly, where these trees are, they were getting up, there's, that's a tree line, so everything forward is pretty densely with...
There's a lot of pine, there's a lot of pines along Grapevine Road, right?
Pines and hemlocks, and we spent a lot of time actually maintaining the hemlocks over the years, so you can kind of see in the rear of the home, or that kind of arch that's like a patio garden, we planted some trees and additional bushes.
Your exit to Brentwood Circle, or is it to Grapevine?
Our, our access is that driveway through, through Brentwood Circle.
But you have a Grapevine address to trust?
It used to be, it used to be on Grapevine.
Yeah, yeah. Neither here nor there, but...
It's actually Mary Buckley's home, I don't know if that made...
Okay.
Since the only six...
She's the only owner.
Yeah, you should know, right?
She's been there the whole time, was, she's the only owner, right, there, and he recently bought it.
So, do you have any questions?
Buckley's letter number nine, did that get addressed? I know she said the plans were fine, but she wanted a statement from an engineer that there would be no change in the water quality or quantity?
They did do that, they just did it in the plans.
Okay.
So, that's, you look at number 13 on the plan set itself, I'll pull it up right now.
Yes.
It actually says that there should be, should not be any significant, so you have your standard language right there. They just did it on the plan.
Okay.
And so, their certification is their engineer's stamp.
Do you have any other questions?
That wasn't on mine.
Have any questions? And the engineer is satisfied?
The, the stormwater consultant is satisfied.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, it's, you know, I know Pete's not here, so I'll have to channel Pete. We take our watershed special permits extremely seriously. Having said that, the advantage in this one is it's not directly on the lake, it's fairly long distance away, and the wetland, potential wetland impact is on the back, not on the front, you know, and it looks like the dry well will channel most of the extra water, blah, 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 so she's okay with it, so...
Just a comment on the dry well, you might want to consider a silt collection box beforehand to clean it out so you don't get any debris in the dry well. That's up to you.
Okay.
You can get a little plastic box, basically, chamber, and even though they should put on screen guards on the gutter, you still get dirt and stuff like that, up to you.
Yes.
But it makes you don't have to replace your dry well, you know, in 25 years, you'd probably go 50.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have asked to add the erosion control onto this plan and to remove the conservation zone.
Reserve that till I saw it.
We have a lot of... Next time.
Well, you, well, you said the whole thing, so I'll make a motion. No, Laura, you can make a motion. Well, you, well, you said the whole thing, so I'll make a motion.
One, eight, um, reasonable alternative, I agree with that, but I'd like to be a little bit stronger, because they tucked it in the area that is sort of most far away, if you will, you know, they, they put it...
That's referred to the bond. You put a bond up, and upon meeting conditions of an as-built, and the engineer certifying that it was constructed according to the plan, you get the 4,000 back.
Phase two, is that really the visioning process? That's where the real public input comes in, we take the data that we have, the information that we have, and that includes the information not only on the economic side of things, and Jeff is gonna head that up, but on the, the physical side of the town, between the watershed analysis and the topography and those kinds of aspects, as well as the historical and archaeological and open space information that's available. And based on that, in lane out of facts, the visioning process since then brings in the public that says, where do you want to go? Where, where do you envision North Andover being in ten, fifteen, twenty or more years from now? And through that process, which we will follow a, I think, a fairly rigorous process in order to maintain a constant flow of information, but also to be able to analyze that information and use it productively within the relatively short timeframe and the, the hours available to us as the consultants and to you as the, as a planning board, to come up with some major directions that we can go. The third phase, of course, is then taking that information and, and documenting that into the master plan recommendations, doing that in a very iterative process, where the recommendations, we may come up with, the preliminary ones are bounced off of the planning board, bounced off of the public, so that they're refined to a point where everybody, through a draft process, a secondary process, and finally a final written process, master planning process, are completed. Part and parcel with this, of course, is also the end result, the implementation of the master plan is zoning regulations. And what we've been asked to do is start off with a complete zoning diagnostic, looking at what are your zoning regulations now, what works, what doesn't work, where are the issues involved with that, where are the, the weaknesses from both the legal perspective, as well as from a, a realistic implementation perspective? And then, as the master plan develops, to be able to also revise or reflect that in a new set of zoning regulations. So at the end, we have a master plan, which is a guiding document, and then you have the implementation, which is the zoning regulations, which say, okay, in order to achieve those visions that come up, the direction we want to go, the strategic plan, these are the regulations necessary for the town to follow moving forward for that. So we're looking at about, I think it's about a year-long process, a little bit over a year through all of this. We hope to accelerate it to the best extent possible, taking into account the need for the community to not only participate, but also to have time to reflect and think about the information we provide. One of the things we've learned over the years in our master planning process is you can't really hurry them too fast. You can stretch them out a long time and people lose interest, but you can't do it too fast, because it takes time for people to really, you know, think about it and come back, and talk to their neighbors about it, and then come back and participate in a meaningful way. So I think we have a good, a good window of opportunity here to, to make that happen, so. We've got a very talented staff of people who will be working on this. One change that you may know, some of you may know, Judy Barrett, who's been working with RKG for the last four years, she is leaving us to take a job down in Falmouth as a director of economic development, but she is gonna continue to be involved with the zoning, primarily with the zoning component of this, she's gonna be in charge of that, and she is assuring us and will ensure you that her involvement in that zoning will continue at the level necessary. Eric Halverson, who's our senior planner in the office, will become the project manager for this, for the day-to-day work. He's highly experienced, he worked for many years with MAPC, familiar with planning, plus we have two other graduate planners, experienced planners in the office, one who is a rather technical side of things, kind of the numbers guy, along with, with Jeff, who is the economic numbers guy, and myself as well, and also a planner named Amanda Berman. We also have some very talented subcontractors. Jen Goldson, who as you know is a preeminent community planner, will be heavily involved in this process, and Daphne Polyades from Community Circle will be heading up the public input process as laid out in it, and both of them are, will continue working with our staff and their staffs to complete the process in a timely fashion. I'll just, you know, that was the introduction to, in the face of who we are. I'm sorry I couldn't bring them all to you tonight, we have other client responsibilities, there are two other, three other public meetings that they're attending tonight, and I was the one that ended up and decided to come on down to meet you, and, but I will be, I will be serving as the principal in charge and pretty the overall ringmaster of the whole process.
So what do you think?
I have a couple of questions. We're, we're starting, as you know, on the advisory board selection. Do you have a number that you recommend of people that we should be seeking?
Based on experience, eleven is, eleven to thirteen is too many. Four or five is really too few. Seven, eight, nine, usually it's an odd number. Seven to nine is a number that really tends to, to work the best from the experience I've had for any kind of advisory committee.
But you, do you find that, in your experience, a certain number drop off after a certain amount of time?
Sometimes they do, and what I've seen, some situations where I've seen where it's worked effectively, you have, let's say, a committee of, of seven or nine people who are committed, but behind them, there may be other volunteers, almost like alternates that you have on your board, who keep, who, who may not have all the time to put into it, but they do keep abreast of it, and they, they're good subs, they're bench substitutes that can come in fairly readily. So really, you know, I don't know how your volunteer situation is here, I know you have a bunch of volunteers from the very many committees that you do have in town, so you probably have a pretty good...
Well, we're actually still advertising, so that leads me to my next question. Do you make recommendations as to skill sets that we're looking for, or expertise, or...
It's, it's good to have kind of a broad spectrum that represents various, you know, key areas that the master plan touches upon, whether it's on the physical side, you know, someone who's familiar with the open space and the, perhaps in particular in this community, with the water resources side of things. Perhaps someone who's familiar with the, the public infrastructure, or has an, an engineer sometimes, you know, who's involved with these kinds of things, that can understand and can, can help translate what the planning, or what the DPW director says their needs are going forward, and act as a bridge between that and the general public. So, so having a range of those kinds of expertises is nice.
Would it be possible to get something from you that says what we should be looking for?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but it would be helpful in our selection, or, you know, encouraging people to join what we're looking for.
Jeff, do you have any thoughts on that?
I was just happy to hear you say eleven is too many. Many years ago, Craig and I worked on a military base reuse project out in the Midwest, and they had, their, their governing organization was called the Committee of Fifty-One. And it was no fun.
Oh, my God, fifty-one.
So, seven to nine is the right number, I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
We're in the, I don't know if you've looked at our bylaws yet, but they're old, they're pieced together, we've done many updates, and we just cram a new little update in there. Where do you see that in the cycle of, you know, is it towards the end, or are you gonna work on it throughout, or...
The way we're planning on doing this, Lynn, is really doing right up front, the zoning diagnostic, which really is the one that says, you know, according to modern zoning theory and current law in Massachusetts, here's where we see issues, here are things that might work, here are things that are, you know, blatantly illegal.
Right, we still have stuff in there that's, you know, that's...
This repeats, you know, this, this piece is a repeat of this, this, and this section. Yours, your bylaw is in fairly good shape relative to others.
Without the worst.
I've been doing a lot of work in Lynn, and there, right on their bylaw, which is this thick, it says nineteen twenty-five. And it's been nothing but a patchwork, and this is a, this is a big city that doesn't have a planner. So it's basically zoning by exception, by council, city council exception, and it, and this is just...
When you think about what Lynn was in nineteen twenty-five, which was a huge manufacturing center, versus what it is today, which is a much smaller percentage of manufacturing, it's much more of a bedroom community for people who commute to Boston, I mean, to not have done a comprehensive rewrite of the zone, it's just crazy.
In both our housing and the, and the economic development strategies, it was a number-one recommendation.
And then, on getting community involvement, you know, getting our volunteer group, do you have a preferred method that you like to see, you know, do you do surveys, you, you know? We don't, we don't reach a large population right now of our town, we find, that with, with the old-school newspaper ads.
No, there, there are a variety of tools that we can, we can use, between, you know, public meetings where people can come in, open houses where you set up issue tables, you know, use the clickers to do the public polling and those kinds of things. One of the things I think will be more effective here than in the past will be the use of the internet and the web, and town's website as a two-way portal, so people can participate one way or another in the planning process, put their ideas in, listen to other ideas. So that's one of the things we want to explore in with Daphne and with Jen in particular. When we kicked the process off, I think, you know, one of the first discussions we have is what's worked in the past, and working with, with Jean and Rebecca, what do they think is the best method, and crafting something that we think is going to be as effective as possible. Always an issue in communities to try to get the right input in, and thorough input, because oftentimes, those that participate in the process represent pretty much of a minority in the community, and you gotta get out and get to people who don't normally participate in the public, the civic process.
In all honesty, I think the only thing that I've found that's effective in town is when they put at all the major intersections, those little signs, you know, but it's true, though, that's the only thing that's really people sees, you know, when there's a, the circus is coming to town and they're at the, tend up in intersections, you know, or something like that.
You'd be surprised, though, like in, sometimes in some of the community preservation projects where there's fields, obviously anybody that lives close to where the field is, that's a big deal for them. And when they did recently this middle school project, they actually got a fair amount of community participation, so it's a focused issue, and there's, you know, in every community now, because of social media, everybody has their own constituency, and they can get the word out to their constituency quickly, and that's maybe some of the things you leverage, you know, I don't know, the patch.
North Andover, I mean, there's two huge Facebook pages, North Andover Moms, and then there's a North, there's various ones, I mean, maybe even another Facebook page. It works in this, I'll tell you, you get reactions like this.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a risk there, because some of the comments aren't always appropriate, and it needs to be mo, it needs to be moderated very closely, but we don't, you run the risk of, well, they didn't like my opinion, and so, you know, I'm gonna...
Yeah.
So you have to moderate, but you have to be realistic about what could be included, but...
One of the really successful ways of outreach, we found, is through the schools. You know, they have things that go home every day or every week, and they're, you know, notices...
Isolating it to the, to people that have kids.
Probably only forty percent of the population, we have a larger, older group, so that, that's, I mean...
But it also brings out the population that oft, they're so busy raising their families, they don't participate in the civic process as much, so it gets, there's ways to get to everybody.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I think, I think right now you have more participation in town with that group than you would, it's, it's used to be, I mean, the other way around, but we're seeing a drop-off in the people, the age group that are attending the town meetings and stuff, so, but, yeah, I mean, we can explore different ones, but yeah, I think the biggest thing is to make up with the committee, how do we, how do we, we need to make up a committee, making up a committee that Scott serves off on the wrong foot, we don't want to go around in a circle. I don't know if we can actually quite get this done in a year, I think it's sort of, that's probably a tight timeline, but...
And remember, too, you have in the middle of this year, starting now, you have the holiday season, so you're really, you're losing two or three months...
Right.
...within that twelve-month period, so in reality, it needs at least twelve months to go around the circle. And you have a summer, too, that is non-productive most of the time. But what we're hoping to do here is get a lot of the stuff done before the summer comes, a lot of the, you know, the baseline analysis work, the data collected, so we can, we can analyze it over the summer, come back in the fall, have that community outreach in terms of, this is what we've learned, now tell us what you would like to see, and do that visioning through the...
Your best bet is to get somebody who's, can involve, engage other people, solicits other opinions, and doesn't dominate it with their own.
Like you.
And would you expect that...
Like my wife.
So the advisory board should take the role of trying to bring people in, necessarily into staff.
They, it doesn't help if you have an advisory board that are a bunch of, you know, that just sit there and meet quietly and take their role very seriously but don't really go out and help spread the word or solicit the input necessary. Because a lot of it will come through informal means. The input we need, the good input, comes from informal means of one person telling another person, hey, I heard a rumor about this, did you hear about something?
Could you maybe give an example or two of, based on your experience, of processes in town that went well, where it somehow from beginning to end went well? Maybe some rules of thumb for us as a planning board, how to give some broad guidance or, you know, even like engagement at town manager? I mean, just, you know, maybe a few wins and what you learned from the wins.
I guess, John, two, two thoughts come to mind. One is engagement of the town employees, the department heads in particular, that they see themselves on board with this, that they're part of the process because it's where a lot of the information, and a lot of the, you know, even the non-technical information, a lot of the issues can be identified through that. So, you know, obviously, starting with the town... Because, you know, obviously, the master plan affects them very directly. And the other piece of it, I would guess, would be, again, it's, it's making sure that the public involvement is managed effectively, so you not only get a wide diversity of opinions and thoughts and input coming in, but also that it's based upon data and information everybody agrees with upfront. This is one of, you know, from my 40 years in public, working with the public, one of the things that I've always found most frustrating is that when you have a board or you have a meeting or a major policy decision has to be made, and everybody spends time arguing So making sure that the, the master plan is balanced and that we're dealing the right way and focusing with enough energy on those areas that's of concern that comes through that visioning process. So, you know, could be some real diversity opinion in terms of what people want North Andover to be in 20 years from now, simply from the demographics.
Do you generally find that of the people who sort of get involved in the process either intensively or just casually, that there's consistency in terms of the vision? Or do you see in most communities dramatically different visions?
Really, I've seen both. What it sometimes happens is you have, the people who get involved are, you know, they have, they're one-issue involvement. They have their pet issue that drives everything else, and so they want, always have to, they want to skew it towards that. It's really our role, and in this case, you know, it's consultant's role, in the public, handling the public process to make sure that it doesn't get derailed that way, that it is a balanced process and that the master plan meets not only the letter of the law but more importantly, the intent, the overall master plan, strategic plan, that the community needs to move forward with. You know, you have some communities that, and you've seen this in town meetings and stuff, where everybody shows up for one vote and then they go home even though there's 12 more very, very important things that have to be voted on. And hopefully, that won't happen here. We'll keep everybody engaged to a point where we'll end up with a, a good master plan.
And tips on, you say, you know, someone who has a pet issue and they derail it. I mean, honestly, I don't think they should be on the advisory committee if they can't, if they can only be singly focused, straight line, and they can't see the broad spectrum. I mean, they can have some, everybody's going to have issues that they, you know, want to focus on, but they can't be that short-sighted and one-sided. Any tips on how to pick those people and get rid of them out of the selection process?
Not that we can really talk, we can bring up at this point in time.
On TV, be careful.
All I can say is every town has one or more of those. My town has it and I sat...
Oh, everybody has.
I sat in your position for 15 years earlier on, and he is still there, actually, in the town, and he goes to every council meeting.
So what you're telling us, though, even if those people were on the board, so somebody had their own agenda or whatever, you know how to manage that? Okay.
But it's easier if you don't have those.
And, you know, with the experience we have collectively among us, we've seen lots of those people in a lot of different communities and a lot of different situations. It's not, you know, it's not, sometimes it's counterproductive to have to spend so much time dealing with them, but hopefully, that won't happen here.
But you'll send Jean or Rebecca, like, or Eric, whoever, the ideas you have for skill sets?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll put that together.
Because we're supposed to get started.
We'll put our brains together and get that over to you, so...
That would be great, yeah.
In terms of setting expectations with the people who may serve on this advisory committee, what would you foresee as the, the frequency of meeting with your firm to...
You know, in our, in our scope of work, we have a certain number of meetings. We had to cut that down a little bit for budget purposes, but I think there's going to be a certain amount of informal meetings, you know, by phone calls and those kinds of things. And until we really have that kickoff and sit down and look at the schedule in detail working with them and with you and with Jean and Rebecca, you know, it's, it's hard to say at this point in time. And a part is going to be reflection on their interest and their, you know, their degree of involvement they would like to have with it. But, you know, certainly, it's an important part of the process and we want to make sure that it's, that we leverage their expertise and their time to the greatest extent possible because that means you're going to get, the master plan's going to be, be that much better as a result.
Great. Well, thank you for coming in. We're excited, actually. We're, we're getting pumped up here.
So are we, so...
We have a cheer up to the beginning of every meeting.
We'll get the whole gang together here for that kickoff and we'll have a...
So, good.
We'll meet everybody else, too.
It was very helpful.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having us and nice to meet all of you.
Thank you all.
See them again.
I'll be back. Says Arnold, yeah. All right. Any, anything else? So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, we already approved the mission, yeah.
Yeah, we already did.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.